A call to order, meeting two on Monday, June 5th. It's now 6:00 PM. Would you please join Councilman Holman in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, thank you for your continued guidance. We rejoice in the additional jobs coming to Goodyear and to those still in a pipeline. We thank you also for your cloak of protection of our military, first responders, and citizens in this community. Please assist all of us to continue on the path towards this amazing community's vision and goals. All of this we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Holman. On the next section, of course, we're going to do something very special tonight, communications. We have only one, and I will be reading a proclamation and recognizing Councilman Holman for the four years of service as a city council member. So Cheryl Lynn, we're going to go down by the microphone in that area in front if you will join me, and we'll be there for just a few minutes, all right? I appreciate that. Just come right up here, I want people to see you. Cheryl Lynn, we have two proclamations tonight. I didn't let you know that, but we're going to start out with the first one, okay? In recognition of the service council member Cheryl Lynn Holman, whereas council member Cheryl Lynn Holman, well, you've served diligently and admirably on the Goodyear City Council since 2013, and has been a professional and a resident of the Southwest Valley since 1980, where she received a bachelor's degree from Grand Canyon University and a master's degree from Northern Arizona University, and where Cheryl Lynn is also a graduate of the Institute of Organization and Management, and where Cheryl Lynn served the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce for 25 years, that could have been long years sometimes, I bet, prior to her retirement from that organization in 2013, where Cheryl Lynn's value, perspective significantly contributed to the economic development, growth, and progress of the Southwest Valley's business community, you were a businesswoman. Prior to her service as a Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Cheryl Lynn owned an office supply business and a printing company in Goodyear, and where Cheryl Lynn has served the Southwest Valley and broader region on a number of nonprofits, boards, committees, and organizations, including Southwest Lending Closet, Australia Toastmasters, Westmark, Leadership West, and Tri-City West Boys and Girls Club, and where she represented the city of Goodyear on the Maricopa County Community Development Advisory Committee and the Valley Metro Regional Public Transit Authority Board of Directors, where Cheryl Lynn's efforts support the city's growth and development and have been tremendously influential, where Cheryl Lynn's status as a community leader has been recognized by many, and a greater focus on creating a sense of community throughout the city of Goodyear has inspired the city's progress and reinforced the city's culture, where Cheryl Lynn's kindness, empathy, pragmatism have made a significant difference in the lives of the residents of Southwest Valley, where as the city of Goodyear, okay Cheryl Lynn, we're forever grateful, grateful for her selfless service to our community and the region. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Georgia Lord, the mayor of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, do recognize the outstanding contribution Cheryl Lynn Holman to the city of Goodyear, and I thank you for your leadership and dedication to the community, in witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, to be affixed this day, 5th day of June 2017. Congratulations, don't go anywhere. So Cheryl Lynn, we have your proclamation, and we'd like to give honor you with a clock, says Cheryl Lynn Holman, council member, Goodyear, Arizona, and it says the date on the bottom. We hope you will take that home, and it will be in a special place. And then these are just flowers for me to take home and enjoy for the week, and we brought the vase, so we'll empty it and we'll wrap the flower up, you can take the vase home. And then there's one more thing we're going to do, we couldn't forget to do this, and I'm sorry he's not here tonight. So I have a recognition of service, Charlie Holman. Where Charlie Holman has been a part of the Goodyear City Council family for a number of years, whereas Charlie has served the needs of council member Holman well, and is an outstanding companion, where he has proven to be great and a loyal friend to the city, whereas Charlie's positive attitude and demeanor have made a positive impact on the lives of others, whereas Charlie's contribution to the city will not be forgotten. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Georgia Lord, the mayor of Goodyear, Arizona, I do recognize the kind contributions of Charlie Holman to the city of Goodyear, in witness whereof I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, be affixed to the 5th day of June 2017, and here is the proclamation for Charlie. Now I'm going to give you the floor, so you are now allowed to speak.
Well, I'm now on the floor. That is amazing, thank you, Georgia Lord Mayor. I've always teased her, I have a real hard time saying Mayor Lord, it just doesn't work for me, so I'm glad she's allowed me to call her Georgia. I really appreciate the recognition, it's amazing, and thank you for acknowledging Charlie because it's like, you know, it's like acknowledging a child of mine. He is a service dog, but he has added a great deal to my life, and I believe smiles to many people. I'd like to just say pretty much just one thing. When I decided to run for council, I wanted to continue to make a difference in our community. I hope I have done that. When you move on to another chapter of your life, it's always a sadness and a joy, but please rejoice with me. I believe it's the right thing, and I have had so many people to say thank you to who have been strong mentors for me and have brought a realization of the challenges government brings to everyone involved. I'm not going to name any one person, but please know that each of you have brought a great deal of knowledge and security, that our city is in good hands, that we have people who want to continue the march to our vision and who are going to do it well, and who are going to do it and bring great joy to our community. Our announcement last week was awesome, 1,500 jobs, folks, 1,500 jobs, that didn't just happen. So each of you, no matter what your job in the city of Goodyear, what your duties in the city of Goodyear, please know how much I appreciate you and appreciate your hard work, and I now become one of the citizen volunteers. I'm not going away, and I am still very, very challenged and interested in the great city of Goodyear.
So council, as we always do, we do have our own comments to make, so I'm going to pass it from councilperson to councilperson to talk about Cheryl and her accomplishments and your relationships, so you want to start down?
Okay. Thank you. I've enjoyed having Cheryl Lynn as my seatmate for the last four years, and we have had a wonderful time at this end of the dais. We have traveled a lot with each other, where we serve on many boards and commissions together, and I have known Cheryl Lynn for a long time, long before I ever came on council, and I have found her to be a steadfast friend, someone I could call on no matter what I would ask her to do. If she couldn't do it, she could put me in touch with someone who could help me with some of my nonprofit woes. We're going to miss you Cheryl Lynn, you have made a difference, you brought a wonderful perspective to this council, you have brought a different perspective to this council that we have appreciated and we have asked a lot of you throughout the last four years, and you've always been there to do it for us, so we want to thank you, you'll be missed, and we love you.
Well Cheryl Lynn, you know, 21 years ago when I came here to Goodyear, you were one of the first people that was part of our business life, and you know, there was a friendship that we've always had, and it was exciting when you came on council, because I knew you, and I knew the heart that you had, and I knew the experiences that you brought to this council, and perspective was going to be wonderful for our city, and I still believe that today. But what I did not know, after all those years, that I did see on the four years of being on this council, is you're a person of grace, and grace in your speech, and grace in the way that you treat people, and it's something that I've learned from you, because I think that when we all get excited about everything that we want to say, you have this calmness in your voice and the way that you express yourself, and so I always have loved that, and even, and that's why I say, after all these years, it was something new that I found in you. But there's something that I have in that little pot that has also been quite you. Get your Wonder Woman cape. Thank you, thank you, and extra nuts since you're always kidding.
Thank you, Councilwoman Osborne. Vice Mayor Laura Chano.
Cheryl Lynn, I just want to say you are a class act. You are always, I think Joanne hit it on the nail, you bring a great perspective from all your business years, working with the chamber and having your own business, and you always bring that, you bring a great perspective on things that, you know, other people may not think about, and you bring it and you discuss it, and you really help everyone get to a decision, and you can tell you really care about those issues, and you really care about the people of this city, and from serving on committees with you and hearing some of your knowledge about how long you've been on different committees and everything, you just didn't show up one day and we're here, it's like you have served the city, I don't think people even realize how many years you've sat on committees and worked and volunteered, and I'm glad to hear you're still going to stay involved, because you have such an important voice, and you're such a wonderful lady from your work at the chamber and everything you've done on this council, and I really do respect you, and we are going to miss you, but you're not going to go far, and I hope we do see Charlie as well. It's so cute to have a meeting, and then Charlie will be under the table, the first time she's brought, it's like, can we pet him? Because he is just such a charming dog, and I know he helps you out, and he's like your right hand, so we will miss you, and we love you dearly, and congratulations, and thank you again for all your hard work from just not us, for the citizens.
Councilwoman Bazzillo.
It's been a pleasure working with you, and you know I'm going to be continuing working with you as a member of the Southwest Lending Closet, so, yeah, so you can't get rid of me, I'll be working with you as we continue on that board. But again, you've been an integral part of this team, you know, what I really like about this group is, we all bring unique sets of and diverse backgrounds as far as skillsets are concerned, and that as a whole makes us a great team and allows us to make, I think, great decisions for our citizens, and you've been a part of that, you know, ever since you've come here with your background in business and being able to get that perspective as well as with Councilmember Osborne. So with that, again, I wish you well, I know I'm going to be seeing you, I think it's Monday, is we have another meeting, so I will see you Monday at the Southwest Lending Closet, but good luck, and good luck to Charlie.
Councilman Stip.
Well, as usual, what's there left to say at the end of the dais, but Cheryl Lynn, I don't know if you remember this or not, but a little more than six and a half years ago when I first decided to run, I met you at your office at the chamber, and it was, you were very gracious to meet the political newcomer at the time, and it was, I learned so much about you from, as the amount of faith that you have, and you know, you bring that as your character to the dais, and that obviously is always very appreciative. The other thing that I think we've learned over time is the nature of your historian, your ability to bring the history of where we've been. It's funny as you look around, the number of people who have actually been here long enough to remember when, but I was amazed tonight, and I don't think I'm going to be in violation, but Councilmember Osborne mentioned that we have a building in the city that you did not even know the origin of the Boy Scouts, at least it appeared it caught you by surprise, so I was shocked when somebody knew something that you didn't know about the city, but I think that is the only time.
It was the Boy Scouts. I thought it was the 911 building that was the Boy Scouts.
So we're going to certainly miss the historian nature in addition to everything that everyone else has mentioned, so I know we'll have an opportunity next week to wish you well, but thank you so much for your service and look forward to seeing you around.
And Cheryl Lynn, from your mayor, thank you. We wanted to make this, rather than the election swearing in, we wanted a night for you, and so this is why we prepared this, and this is why we're all letting you know how much we care, and as your mayor, and I've told you often, I've gone up to you and said, thank you for your common sense, thank you for supporting some of the issues that I would felt strongly about, but wherever the argument was, not when, we don't really argue, but discussion was, you were able to bring us back to the center, and that takes a special talent, and I'm going to miss that, so I really appreciate that. Of course, we've all been talking like she's going away, she's got, comes to council meeting, she's going to have to make, so I'm going to, and now we're going to call this to order, and we're going to get back to business, so we're going to make you work, so just get ready, here we go, all right? Sounds good, thank you, and thank you, council. All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city on non-agenda items, but before I get into this, we had a little misunderstanding at the last time that somebody wanted to come forward to council and speak, and so what I do is, what the norm is, is we do a call out for the citizens, and I will say, now is the time to address the council on a non-agenda item, and then later in, I call out to the public if it's on an agenda item. So we did discover that in Section 8, it says on here, on information items, comments, commendations, report on current events, presentations by mayor and council members, staff members, of the public. The council may propose, discuss, deliberate, anything, so it was assumed that that was the time for the public to come up. We haven't even, we're investigating this, where this happened, and I think it probably, in my personal view, happened when we used to do a call at the end of the council meeting, so we'd be here 11 o'clock, and the citizen would be waiting out there to come and talk on a non-agenda item or any item, and so we changed it so that they wouldn't be sitting around, but we're still looking at that, but as long as I'm a mayor, and I will be that for four years, more, we will do the call like we've all done, so I'm going to call if you, and you must fill out a card, okay? So when you come in, you fill it out, and normally when I make a second call and say, is there anybody else that might queue the person that didn't do a card, that they can come up. So tonight, we're going to say, this is the time for citizens who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, and right now I do have a card from Sarah Gilligan, so if you'll come forward, state your name, address, and I think you know the timing, but I will let you know that you have three minutes to speak, the yellow light, and the buzzer will let you know, we have 30 seconds left. You're on.
Hello, councilmembers and mayor, I'm Sarah Gilligan, and I reside at 12503 South 175th Avenue. Excuse me. During the recent city council election, a question was brought to my attention over and over, and I'm sure Brannon heard it many times as well. This question is why we have our elections separate from the state cycle, so in addition to looking into changing whether Goodyear should count undervotes and overvotes to calculate the victories in our city council election, I encourage council to look into what it would take to align our council election with the state election cycle. I hope you will be willing to look for any opportunity to save our city money in the long run. I'm aware that it might take a separate election, but I'm hopeful it would not. From what I understand, when the city charter was written, the founding council did not want the city election to get lost amongst the shuffle of state offices, propositions, judges, et cetera, so they established a separate election that we pay for, and with the runoff, because three candidates did not receive a majority of votes cast, we paid again, and I can tell you, people were annoyed about that, I heard it many times, questioning me like it was my decision to do that. I wrote Maureen Scott to clarify what an election costs the city. The answer from her was that we pay $2.12 per registered voter. We had approximately 43,000 voters, so we will be paying about 91,000 for the primary election. The general election, which was our runoff, will cost around the same, so just over $180,000 for those three seats. So if we were aligned with the state election, we would not pay an extra fee to run our own independent election. More participants would likely vote, because typically more voters participate in state and federal elections, which would likely allow for three candidates to earn a majority of votes cast and earn a seat, which would then save us the additional fee of holding a runoff election. Considering that I myself personally received a second chance with the runoff election, I think it's pretty meaningful that I'm suggesting a solution to eliminate the likelihood of a runoff, thus saving our city money and the annoyance of a prolonged election season. I also received quite annoyed looks at people when I'm continuing to meet them. I think this is worthy of your consideration. Thank you for your time, and best wishes to Brannon when he starts his term after next week's inauguration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and just for the information, council can respond to criticism, they can request the staff investigate and report on the matter, and they can press the matter to be scheduled on a future agenda, and as the mayor, if we could furnish the information of the different things we've done as to how we decided to proceed with the election at the time that we do, and all the process we went through to keep the election at the date we have it now, so Sarah, they will get back to you, and they will have information for you, all right? I appreciate you coming up, thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Stip.
I have a follow-up question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we get information on the undervote issue, counting the undervotes and whatnot? Can we get some information on why we do that, and is there an ability to change that? Because I think, as Sarah pointed out last week and again this week, that had a significant impact on whether we needed to do this or not.
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, yes, that is something we are following up on this summer, but yes, thank you for that, looking at the over and undervotes as part of our process. Thank you.
Great, all right, then let's go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.9 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, authorize the city manager or designate to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the purchase of aerial imagery. Item 6.2, authorize the mayor or designate to execute an intergovernmental agreement, Amendment 1, JPA 17-00064021, with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the purchase of traffic signs with federal funds, and authorize a budget transfer to expend the federal funding. Item 6.3, approve a request from Andrea Lukowetz, agent for Mod Superfast Pizza LLC for an acquisition of control for Series 12 liquor license number 1207A213 located at 1380 North Litchfield Road, number K3A, Goodyear, Arizona, generally located on the west side of Litchfield Road, north of I-10 and south of McDowell Road. Item 6.4, control for the following Walgreens, approve an acquisition of control for the following Walgreens stores. Number 1, Walgreens, number 12334, liquor license number 1007076026, located at 1654 North Pebble Creek Parkway, Goodyear, Arizona. Number 2, Walgreens, number 3657, liquor license number 09070533, located at 3361 North Litchfield Road, Goodyear, Arizona. Number 3, Walgreens, number 12386, liquor license number 10076350, located at 9800 South Estrella Parkway, Goodyear, Arizona. And number 4, Walgreens, number 02243, liquor license number 10075903, located at 387 North Estrella Parkway, Goodyear, Arizona. Item 6.5, adopt resolution number 171811, approving the city's continued participation in the Maricopa County CDVG program through June 30, 2021, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution and providing for an effective date. Item 6.6, approve an IGA between the city of Goodyear and city of Phoenix that will allow Goodyear to obtain access to the sales tax system with data supplied by the Arizona Department of Revenue, and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city. Item 6.7, approve the replat of lots 31 through 54 inclusive and lots 58 through 126 inclusive, Rio Paseo parcel eight, subject to stipulations. Item 6.8, approve a quitclaim deed to facilitate the extinguishment of an access and utility easement which encumbers portions of the final class for Los Brieses 2B and 2C dot 6. Item 6.9, approval of the acceptance of two water and sewer easements associated with the West Goodyear Sewer and Water Infrastructure Agreement.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from consent agenda? Councilwoman Bazzillo?
I have just a general question for 6.6.
Okay, who would like to address that?
Hi Doug, this is, we had talked a little bit ahead of time, so you know what I'm going to be asking, but you know, this is important to me because we get such a large percentage of our general fund operating revenue from sales tax, and it's mainly for the general public, because we used to just get a sheet of paper regularly from Arizona Department of Revenue, and things have been changing. Can you just give the audience here a general overview of what's been changing and what this IGA kind of executive summary is going to be doing for us?
Absolutely. A couple of years ago, the Arizona State Leg-
Turned it off.
It's off, yeah. Just, yeah.
So that the Arizona Department of Revenue would collect sales tax for all municipalities within the state of Arizona. Prior to that, some of the larger cities such as Phoenix collected their own sales tax. Due to some implementation problems, that took until January 1st of 2017 for that to go into place, so now the state of Arizona is collecting all sales tax for all municipalities within the state. As part of that, how the information comes to the city of Goodyear is through an Excel spreadsheet. They email that to us on a weekly- They email that to us on a weekly basis with all the information in it. It's not that easy to access and get, pull the data out that we would need to really look at what our sales tax collections are. This IGA helps us, gives us access to a $2 million system that the City of Phoenix put together. It's a web-based system with an Oracle database in the background that's going to allow us to query all the information much quicker and simpler than we could through an Excel spreadsheet. Also gives us additional access to data that would not be in that spreadsheet, such as in our spreadsheet, we just get business class, which means Safeway reports there as a retail establishment. Under this, we'll be able to go in there and pull out individual grocery stores. So it gets it down to that more granular level of information. It will also give us the location of a business. Currently, we just, council just, will be voting on an item with Walgreens with four locations in the city. In our current spreadsheet, if Walgreens could report those as one location, we would not know which location is based. Under this, it will break it down to individual locations. And then one other thing, it gives us access to all data. So if we think that there, and that's all data, not just the City of Goodyear, but for the entire state of Arizona. So if we think somebody's not reporting to us and we want to start looking at it for audit purposes, we'll be able to look across all cities and see that. So it's access to a lot more information than we've ever had before in a much simpler, easier-to-access way as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I remember the old-fashioned way was not very efficient. And I think that's kind of important for you to bring that up, because we are moving, I guess, into the 21st century, and now you'll have more tools and data as far as planning and having an idea where your revenue sources are coming from or not coming from to help you manage one of our largest general, or is our largest general fund source. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor has a question.
I just had a follow-up on that. Will that allow us to break it down, if we can do it by stores, also by like food tax, regular tax as well, easier or not?
It will go to that individual business, and then in there, it has, because it's a different rate for the different things, we would be able to see the different rates.
So that would help us?
Correct.
We could monitor the, what taxes are the ones closest to Litchfield as opposed to up in Estrella, where-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stip?
Not on this subject.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had you going. Mind on this subject. Councilwoman Osborne, is this on this subject?
Yes. Just to let you all know, the new system that the Department of Revenue has put out now, the online TPT, or TTP, whatever, doing your forms online now, actually has really helped businesses not make the mistakes they could have in the past, because they are using the correct codes, because the system will not allow you to move forward if you've used the wrong things. You are recognizing it. And so it's taken a little bit, but I myself can say that it's a much easier, efficient type of system now. So I can totally see how, at the city level, the information that you're going to gather is going to be far better information, and so that's a good thing.
Does anybody else have another question on this? Councilwoman Campbell?
Is there a cost for the IGA?
Yeah, it is about $8,500 one time, and then $1,800 a year after that.
All right. And how long is the IGA going to be for?
I do not know if it has an expiration date on it or not.
Okay, could you let me know later? Thank you.
All right, on that one. So you had, Councilwoman Stip, you have one you want to poll?
Two, actually. 6.7, 6.8, and just have questions.
All right, so 6.7, who's going to address that? And what was this?
6.8.
6.8, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stip?
Katie, I reviewed the staff report information and whatnot, and I did not see a planning and zoning recommendation in that. Did I miss it?
No, thank you. A replat is similar to a final plat, and it doesn't go to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Which is why I wasn't there. Okay, perfect. Thank you. That was it.
And 6.8?
6.8, while Linda's walking up. So for speeding up the time, can you hear me?
Sorry, I could hear a little bit.
Oh, no, I'll wait.
Thank you, Linda.
I was going to try to do it while you were walking up, so you could have an answer as soon as you got there. We are issuing a quitclaim deed for access to utility easements. Are we giving up the easement?
No, the easement was never actually accepted by the city, and it isn't needed for anything related to Los Briesas or anything, any of the neighboring properties. What it is doing is creating an encumbrance on the property that won't allow the property to develop properly.
Okay. And there is not a need for the easement?
No, there is not a need for that easement. It's actually, will end up being in the middle of lots within Los Briesas.
Okay.
There's nothing in the, there's nothing existing in the easement, and there was, there's no existing roadway that's used. It's, there's no reason for it.
Okay. So my second question was, do we need it? And the answer is obviously no. So, okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. Then can I have a motion?
Mayor, I have three.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Campbell, I didn't see that.
I have a question for 6.1, 6.2, and 6.9.
Well, let's start it with 6.1, then. Luke, are you in? Are you in the house, Luke? There you are.
Luke in the house.
Luke, my question, my question is, by purchasing this aerial imaging map, is that going to allow our mapping division to actually make a map of Goodyear that will tell us what our boundaries and what the streets are within the city as well as Mobile?
So Mayor and Councilmember Campbell, the high-resolution aerial imagery that we're purchasing won't go all the way down to Mobile. We have some lower-resolution aerial imagery that goes down to Mobile. The higher resolution here is for about 80 square miles. We pay by the square mile for the northern area, but we are planning on taking that map and improving our public interface for the map, so it'll point the map out to the public where they'd see the high resolution and say that, like, the 80 square miles of more developed area, and then the Mobile area, they'd still have aerials, but it would be a little bit lower resolution.
Will they be able to distinguish what our boundaries are down there?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. What's the next one, Wally?
The next one is also for Luke.
What's the number?
6.2. So I understand it is using federal funds, and I understand that we authorized you to go out and check the condition of our signs, and the signs were in a worse shape than we thought. So that's why you're coming back to have an additional allocation to replace those signs. Why would we, why would we go before the complete inventory was done? Why did we have to do half of it, and now you're coming back to redo it?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, so we requested those funds probably about four years ago in both phases together, because it's such a long cycle. We requested both phases, like Phase 1 and Phase 2, in fiscal years that were a couple of years apart. And then, so if we had waited until the inventory is complete, then it'd be like another four or five-year cycle in order to get the signs replaced. So the reason was the timing of at least getting to do them back-to-back, and then with the opportunity to get more federal funds if the condition turned out to be less than was originally estimated.
Okay, so the money we originally allocated, have we already expended that for new signs?
We have not expended any of the money for new, the inventory was completed in the spring, and then ADOT in March indicated what was needed for, to replace all the poor and fair signs, conditions for poor and fair. So now, coming in the fall and spring of 18 is when the signs would be replaced that were in poor and fair conditions.
Okay, do we have to wait until we get the federal funding to do that?
We have to wait until ADOT advertises and gets a contract to purchase the signs. But once ADOT has that contract to purchase the signs, then we can move forward with replacements. It is a time period just for them to acquire the sign contract.
Okay, so you think within the next year or two, it'll be done?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then when will we do another inventory to see how bad the signs that are not very bad now are bad? Is this done every three or four years, or every five years?
So we have a base inventory of all the signs, and then in our asset management program that we use, it will then, from the condition today, help kind of estimate the deterioration of these signs. So that gives us a good estimate, and then we'd probably go back, like you're saying, about five years and try to acquire some additional federal funds to continue this cycle of sign replacement.
Okay. I know we have a lot of signs in the city, and that's kind of not our flagship, but when the signs were in good shape, people comment how nice it looks, and then when they start looking grungy, that's when they wonder, you know, if we're running out of money or what. So, okay, thank you. So my last question is with-
Thank you, Luke.
So here we have something again on West Goodyear. I would hope we're done. Now, once we approve this sewer easement, are they going to be able to start building the water line, whatever they need to do? It seems every couple, two, three months, something else comes back on that poor property that we hope gets developed in our lifetime.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Campbell. I anticipate that we will have one more item coming before you that relates to a county piece of right-of-way that we're going to have to be constructing, but this is the final city piece where we're acquiring the easement in which to build the water and sewer line, but then there's a county piece that is still, we're still working on that.
So do we have to wait till the county piece is done before they can start building the sewer and water?
Well, and at this point, we're not holding them up. They're doing some reconfiguration of the design, and we're working very closely with them.
Okay, good. I just don't want us to delay them any further than we have to, and I was surprised to see something else come forward. I thought we were done with them.
Understood.
So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Could I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Holman, a second vice mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, we're going to go to the business, and again, remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there's a motion on the table. So 7.1 is a public hearing advertised for June 5, 2017, to adopt an ordinance 17-1351. Approving the Carina at Palm Valley Pad, aka Villas at Palm Valley, has been re-advertised and moved to June 26, 2017. So we're going to go on down to 7.2, and that item is a public hearing to consider a special use permit to allow the church in a PAD zoning district. I'm going to open the public meeting, and Karen Craver, Planner 3, will present. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is the 24 acres that the Refinery Church is purchasing at the southeast corner of the 303 and Indian School within the PV 303 PAD. The church will be built on the southern two-thirds of the property, and the northern one-third will be held for future commercial development. The first phase of the church will be 25,000 square feet, with future expansion bringing it to 60,000 square feet. The curved access road that you see off of Indian School will be built by Sunbelt Holdings, the developer of PV 303. The landscape plan shows the focus on the outdoor space to the south of the church. To the east of the first-phase parking will be future parking to accommodate the church expansion. These are the elevations that have been proposed for the church. As you can see, the colors, the materials, and the architectural style are all very compatible with existing development within PV 303 and the surrounding area. Additional elevations of the church. And because the church meets all the criteria for the issuance of a special use permit, compatibility with the area, conformance with the general plan, and Luke's Air Force Base's flying mission, and is not detrimental to the surrounding property owners, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval of the SUP, subject to the stipulations in your staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the project engineer and members of the congregation are here as well, if you have any questions of them.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Does anybody would like to speak? Then let's go on, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I have a motion a second to approve a special use permit for the Refinery Church to construct a church at the southeast corner of SR 303 and Indian School Road within the PV 303 pad, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I had a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Lortano. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Stip?
Karen, can you go back to, oh, you can't. Keep going. Right, one more. That one.
Oh.
Under the word "property" in this sign, is that channel, if you will, and I presume that the church is going to be in that lower triangle, correct?
Mayor, if I may, yes, Councilwoman Stip, that is correct.
Just making sure we're talking, just to orient where I'm going with my discussion. The land that has some greenery on it right now is zoned agricultural, according to the staff report. Correct?
Property to the south.
Immediately south of it.
This is part of the PV 30, PAD, PV 303 PAD.
Do you have a pointer? Can you use it, please?
The church is going to be built, like, across here and within here. And then this part here will be future commercial developments.
Okay, the area that's green below it?
Here.
Yep, that whole area right in there. The staff report says is agricultural. That's the current zoning. Am I correct?
Yes.
I'm looking at your face, so.
That is not, I'm sorry, that is not part of the PV 303 PAD, so that is zoned agricultural.
Correct, okay. So it's zoned agricultural, and that is part of the future, I hate to say "expansion," but the eventual build-out of Pebble Creek.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Does anybody know the answer to that question?
Katie might.
Here she comes.
I tried to look online, I couldn't find the answer to that.
This is Katie to the rescue tonight. Come on, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stip, I am going a little bit by memory, but that is the Pebble Creek area, and they do have their golf course portion locate planned in that portion of the area. So it's not houses right up to that property line, it's the golf course area.
Do we have any idea how close the houses are going to be? And the reason that I'm drilling into this so deeply is I'm very concerned about the rooftop events, and we're going to allow rooftop events adjacent to a future residential area, and that never expires.
I don't remember, I don't remember the houses lined up. There's not houses lined up on it.
There are not houses there today, but we are going to create a condition that in the future allows for houses to be built somewhere in that area, adjacent to a place that is going to have rooftop events. The rooftop events don't die when the second story gets built.
It's golf course.
Yeah.
To answer your question, it is golf course. We don't have the answer at our fingertips of how far away the closest house is planned. We could look that up and provide that.
Well, yeah, I'm just concerned about creating, we're going to create a future problem. And I'm, the reason that I'm looking at this from this perspective is we created a future problem at another church location with the prohibition of a driveway. And we came back five years or 10 years later with this whole public outrage about the driveway and whatnot, and we allowed that to happen. We're getting ready to do the same exact thing in this location without any discussion about the public, or about the rooftop event, and that's in the special use permit. So I think we need to have some discussion about what the, what does that, what does that look like? How we, there's no, nothing to contain the sound, there's, and a council 10 years from now, or 15 years from now- There's...And council 10 years from now or 15 years from now is going to listen to a roomful of Pebble Creek residents complaining about a rooftop event. So I don't know if there's a way that we can address that in the special use permit that allows the church to be built, because I do not want to stop the church from being built.
Thank you. Those are all excellent questions. And I think we're going to ask the applicant to tell you a little bit more about what they plan for that. But just from a processing standpoint, council would have the option to approve the special use permit without the rooftop garden, if that's the way you wish to proceed.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the area, the rooftop, that where they would be having celebrations, as if you can see my pointer, is along the...
Here, Bart.
It's kind of the northwest third of the roof. And this portion of the roof here, between the celebration area and the neighborhood that you're concerned with, is...This is all mechanical equipment, so there's a certain height to that. It's 6, 8 feet, air conditioning and items like that. This dark line here is also screening, 6 feet tall. So there is some...There is some screening and obviously sound attenuation that would happen because of the proposed rooftop improvements.
And when the second story goes up and the building is expanded, we could be looking at, with this special use permit, however you reconfigure the addition, could be a much larger place.
I'm not aware of what the configuration looks like with the second floor, but if I consult with my professional team, I can come back and probably respond to that.
Yeah, that would be great. And I guess while you're doing that...Can you still hear me? While you're doing that, how important is this rooftop event scenario? And Karen, while they're talking, I have a second question that you probably can answer with regard to the private roadway.
Yes.
I think the next slide is the one that shows the...Nope, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, so this private roadway that comes up on the east that connects to Indian School Road at the word "road," yeah, right there.
Right there, yep.
That's a private drive, private roadway, constructed by Sunbelt Holdings.
Yes, sir.
As every intersection in the city of Goodyear has the potential, that one will need a traffic light one day. Who's going to pay for that traffic light? Because there's a road on the other side. Is that in development agreement for the north side, that they'll be paying for the traffic signal? And have we done...And has a traffic study been done regarding the entrance and exit from that area?
The typical process for the installation of traffic signals is the property owners on the corners pay for it. I'm not aware that there's a specific development agreement that addresses this yet. The church submitted a traffic addendum to the original overall traffic study for PV303. And the traffic signal is not warranted with the traffic that is projected from PV303 and the addition of the church. It is not yet warranted.
Right, but it doesn't mean it won't be. So I guess I'm going to go back to...We've paid for traffic lights in places that we've allowed construction to occur. So I'm not sure that the property owners are necessarily on the hook for that. Does anybody know about the development agreement? Potential for this, or if we haven't done it yet?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Stipp. I'm not aware of a development agreement, but I have already had conversations with Sunbelt Holdings about the...I guess I'll say opportunity for a traffic signal to be warranted here, and that they would be responsible for that.
Okay, that's reassuring. Thank you. Okay, so back to my rooftop question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the second floor is actually being built with this portion of the church. I believe it's that the interior is not going to be finished out, but later it will be finished out. So the height is where it is, and the rooftop equipment that exists and the screen wall that we talked about earlier will be built in the first phase. So they will remain. The...Any expansion that happens to the footprint will happen to the northwest. And to your second question, the periodic use of the rooftop by the church is critical for them. They really want to use the rooftop as part of the facility, so...
Okay, so I guess I ask staff, how do we ensure that when we have noise issues, that we're not creating a...We're not creating a condition here? We have to look at what's being built today and what's going to be built in 10 years from now, especially particularly residential. Are there time constraints we can put on there? Turn the music off by 10 o'clock, or whatever the...I mean, what can we do to get a win-win out of this?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Councilmember Stipp, I'm gonna...Can I get Elmo? I don't know if this is going to work. Look at that.
It works. There you go, Katie. There we are. It's a little blurry now. There, there. Yep, it's nice.
So just to give you a little more detail, we were able to pull it out. So you can see here, this is the property line where the color ends here. So the church is about right here. And then this is the noise contour line right here. So the golf course area and that RV park were put adjacent to the PV303 area, because those are in the Luke noise contour area, and houses cannot be placed inside there. Just measuring this area here, it's more than 500 feet. It's 650 feet.
Thank you, Christopher.
And because it's in the noise contour area, and it's more than 500 feet, we weren't as concerned with the noise that may come with the use of the rooftop entertainment area. 500 feet is more than what's required. For example, for like a bar that has to be separated from a residential area or other outdoor uses, usually we require those to be separated about 300 feet. And since it's in the noise contour area, that's why staff brought this recommendation forward.
Appreciate the information. Any other questions?
No, thank you for your help.
Okay, thanks so much.
Mine's not going to show up as good as Katie's, I don't think. But you can see this measurement right here. This is the property line of PV303. This is the sound contour that Katie was alluding to earlier, and it's 654 feet away. So that is the sound contour from Luke that residential homes are not allowed to be built past.
Thank you for confirming that. In a sec, we vote on it?
Christopher, on that...I read the information that talked about... There was an issue brought from Luke about the property. And it was very vague, and it was okay. But I guess I have to ask the question, this is a place of assembly. How is that allowed in the...It's not in the APZ, I presume? It's just in the noise?
That's correct. Churches are allowed within the section of PV303, provided they are not within APZ 1 or 2, and it is not. And they are not within the 75 LDN noise contour, which it is not.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right. So we're going to vote on this?
I've got a question.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to just share with Councilmember Stipp that where the golf course is, that's our final nine holds. And it's put there because we cannot put houses there. And it makes sense to put it where we can't build houses, rather than take our other land and use that. I have a question, though. This...They'll be coming in off and entering and exiting only off of Indian School, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then, Mayor, if I may, Councilwoman Campbell, then also a secondary access will have to be constructed that will be a secondary access for fire protection or emergency services, if need be. But that will also come off of Indian School.
They both have to come off of Indian School. There'll be nothing coming off of 303, because there's not any interchange there. All right, my next question is, what is the...What is the membership total for this church? And is this the pastor speaking? I don't know who the gentleman was that was speaking.
The gentleman that spoke to you previously was the project engineer, but the pastor is here as well.
All right, well, if someone could tell us what is the membership of Refinery Church, please? Just roughly, you don't have to...We won't hold you to the exact number.
Council Michael Bailey with Refinery Christian Church. And we have an average attendance of 600 per week.
So you might have a membership of 750 to 800, roughly?
Our database would be closer to 1,000.
Yes, what I thought, okay. Are we going to provide enough parking at the beginning for that many folks?
Yes, we are. I defer to our engineer to give a count. But that's...It's planned to accommodate the current and, I believe, also the future phase. So we won't have to accommodate that when we push out to the 50,000 square foot.
Okay. And do you run two to three services a Sunday?
Currently, we run four services over the weekend, two on Saturday afternoon, two on Sunday morning.
Okay.
And that may be a model we continue by moving in.
All right. I think...Oh, and the pictures that you showed regarding the concept of the buildings, have they already picked those colors and all of that?
Yes. We...Barring any other oversight or approval that's needed, but those are my personal preferences.
Okay, thank you. Where's your sign going to be? Is it going to be out on Indian School? Right there.
Well...
Councilwoman Campbell, they will have the wall signage on the building, and then there will be signage on Indian School.
Okay, will it be a monument sign at the entrance?
In all likelihood, yes.
Okay.
Councilman Osborne?
If this all goes through, I just wanted to say welcome to Goodyear. And I congratulate you on your expansion.
I just want to say he's alive. Go for it. All right, let's vote on this, all right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Welcome to Goodyear. Let's go to...
Thank you.
Yes, I know there's...Let's go to 7.3. And this is the public hearing to consider the request of a convenient-use drive-through restaurant. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Oh, and you're back. Okay, Katie. Now, did I...
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Steve Cratchit was unexpectedly out.
Yeah, he was.
So I'm giving the presentation on his behalf. As you stated, we received a request for a use permit to allow a drive-through use for the Panera Bread Restaurant, which is locating northwest of Pebble Creek Parkway and Interstate 10 at the Pebble Creek Marketplace Shopping Center. The future WinCo is planned to be right about here, just west of the Panera Bread. The site will be accessed from Pebble Creek Parkway right here, which will be a right-in, right-out-only entrance and exit. But there'll be a full, signalized eventually interchange off of McDowell Road to the north of the center. And then you'd be able to travel through the center to the Panera Bread site. The site's 1.73 acres, and it's a 4,500-square-foot building. They require 56 parking spaces. They provided 70. Their plan is being to be open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., but we don't have a restriction on the hours of operation on the use permit. So that is flexible if they wish to change that. We also provided you with the building elevations that they provided to us, which you can see. They've provided a canopy over the drive-through window, since the drive-through window is proposed to face Pebble Creek Parkway to minimize the visual impact of the drive-through. Notice of the public hearing was posted, and we held a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, and no public comment has been received. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, subject to the provided stipulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I have a motion a second to approve a request for the use permit for a convenient-use drive-through restaurant to be constructed on the 1.73-acre parcel described in the preliminary site plan dated April 11, 2017, submitted with a use permit application, which is located within the Pebble Creek Marketplace Commercial Center at the northwest corner of Interstate 10 and Pebble Creek Parkway, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stipp, and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Did I do better tonight? Okay, great. Open for council discussion. Councilman Campbell?
Katie, will you show us where the drive-through is going to be? I've looked at this, and I've looked at this, and I can't figure it out at all. This one shows that Panera is right up against the road, and this one shows that it's in the middle of the lot. So...
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Campbell. This is Interstate 10.
Okay.
About right here to the south. So there's no other development between Panera Bread and the interstate. There won't be any other buildings.
Okay.
But the drive-through, the window, pickup window, is right here. It faces Pebble Creek Parkway. So you'd enter the site typically from the north, pull in here. The menu board is on the south side of the building here. And then you drive through, pick up your order, and then exit the site again to the north.
Okay. And where's parking for it? In the back and the front?
Yeah, there's parking on several sides. The main parking area and main entrance is to the north. So there's parking located here, but there is additional parking here.
Okay.
And the parking for the WinCo is also to the west. So there's some shared parking there, too, if there's additional parking needed for the site.
And show me again how they're going to get in and out of this location now? I mean, if it was built today?
Into the drive-through, they would come from the north and kind of turn. There's like a little jig here.
No, I mean, just to come into the cafe.
Oh, I'm...
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. The front entrance is on the north side of the building.
Okay, do you enter off of Pebble Creek Parkway, or do you enter off of McDowell?
You could enter either one. Pebble Creek Parkway will be a right-in, right-out.
Good.
So if you're coming from the south, you won't be able to turn left into that entrance. You'd have to go up to McDowell and then turn into the center.
All right.
But if you're coming from the north, you could just turn right into the center, right here.
Okay.
By Panera Bread.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Osborne, is the applicant here?
I believe so.
Well, hello. I just wanted to say I'm thrilled you guys are expanding. My business is actually on the northeast corner area, and we're thrilled to have you guys expanding. I am excited. I know you guys are probably thrilled to be next to the I-10 for that exposure, so that's understandable. I would have loved to have had you at the other corner, closer to McDowell. But, you know, I'm just excited to have you guys here. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. I had a conversation this weekend, and somebody said that Panera is going to have, in some areas, in some states, or they were talking about Colorado, I believe, that they're going to have a delivery system? They're going to be delivering? And so is your restaurant going to be doing the same thing?
Yeah, it won't be rolled out right away when the store, when the cafe opens, but it'll hit this market for sure, probably in the next year or so.
Well, that's a really good...
Yeah, it's being tested throughout a lot of markets right now.
Yeah, that's a great service, so we'll look forward to that.
Great.
Before you leave, you have a question? Councilman Pizzillo?
Just general, the store that you have across the street, comparison-wise, what percentage size-wise is this from the one you have across the street? Because I'm familiar with the one across the street. Same size, 50% larger, 20% larger?
It's roughly the same size. I think that one is closer to 4,000 or 4,200 square feet.
Okay.
Without a drive-through.
Okay. So really, the big difference is the drive-through that you've added on this versus the other one that you've had? Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Stipp? Yes, Councilman Stip?
Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
I have technical questions for Katie, and probably Rebecca, so if you want to get on deck.
Thank you, and again, welcome.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, so if we can go to, I think, the slide before this one. This is a dirt field right now, and we're going to, I assume we're going to be constructing this sometime soon. I assume that the left-in, left-out, right-in, right-out off of McDowell is going to be in the upper right-hand corner of this picture. And we're going to put a roadway through that entire thing to, how are we going to do this?
Thank you, Councilmember Stip. This is the preliminary plat that might provide some more detail, and I think I'll ask, too, if Christopher would come up and help, because he has, he's been working with the property owner on what improvements they're going to be completing, but this is that main entrance.
Mayor, Councilperson Stip, to your point and question, the physical improvements that will be taking place with the initial development of Panera Bread will allow it to go all the way out to, to McDowell Road. It's, the master developer for the site, for the entire Pebble Creek Marketplace site, is moving forward with all of the improvements necessary to support the development, which includes the driveways to the Panera Bread site, the driveways and utilities and so forth for these other pad sites that are proposed on this approved preliminary plat.
Are they responsible for the traffic light on McDowell? Because I know there's a roadway that comes out across the street from there.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Stip. The specifics of that signal I can get to you, but it was done some time ago, and the city has a participation in that as well as the developer, but we are working those out with the owner, the property owner, but I can get you the proportional split of those.
Okay, just as long as we've kind of got it in the plan, that's.
Absolutely.
Okay. While you're there, on the right-hand side of this picture, in the word Parkway at the W, there's that traffic cut, yep, right there, which is not intended to be a U-turn area, but will become a U-turn area for people who are coming north on Pebble Creek Parkway who don't want to do the whole loop-de-loop to come around there. Is there a way that we can, because that's not being used right now? Is there a way that we can, other than a sign? I mean, I have a lot of faith in our police department, but that doesn't stop anybody from doing it. That's a high-speed area, is there something that we can do that's a little bit more appropriate?
So are you suggesting that we put a no-U-turn sign, or are you asking what we plan on doing?
Sure. What do you plan on doing?
Okay, so at this point, I, I'm going to need to look at that area and figure out what our proposition would be, but I'm not going to commit to putting a no-U-turn sign at that point.
Yeah, I guess I just would ask that we look at it in anticipation of, I realize it's supposed to be the, the next driveway, it's supposed to be a left-in driveway, and I would certainly understand that if the master developer is going to put the other driveway in, then it doesn't, doesn't make any difference. But if that's not the case, I would ask that we be proactive and not wait for the traffic accident to be the driver of us doing something.
Understood, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, let's put it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Excuse me. Let's go to 7.4. It's a public hearing to consider the amendment to the residential parcels with the El Cidro final planned area development. Public hearing open. Joe Schmidt, long-range planner, to present. Joe?
Evening, Mayor and Council. This item tonight is a small amendment to the El Cidro PAD, which you have seen on occasion, and you're going to see it again tonight. You are well familiar with its location, but for anybody who's watching the show tonight that doesn't know where it is, it's located south of Lower Buckeye Road, west of Cotton Lane, over to Citrus, and another portion is on the south side of Lower Buckeye Road, south, east of Cotton Lane. The development plan for the PAD adopted a set of land, of land-use designations for residential uses which range from LDR 1 to 2, to 3, to 4, and each one of those corresponds to a particular size lot and has development standards associated with each of those lots. In December of 2014, the, the council adopted a PAD amendment which changed the side setbacks in the LDR 2 zone from a minimum requirement of five feet and 10 feet to five and five. I think I've got that flipped there. At the time, the impact of the change on the maximum lot coverage was not fully considered, and even though the setbacks were reduced from five and 10 to five and five, the percentage of lot coverage was not addressed, and at 45%, a, a single-story home could not be built within the full building envelope. And so, the, with, working with the applicant, we reconsidered that, and they are proposing now a new maximum lot coverage of 55% for the LDR 1, 60% for the LDR 2, and 50% for the LDR 3, which will help them better accommodate single-story homes. It's not an issue for two-story homes because they stack up and they take less area. The second part of the request is an adjustment of the parcel boundaries between Parcels 1D, 1E, and Parcel 2, to make the boundaries of the land-use plan consistent with the parcel boundaries of the plats that were prepared for this project. We learned, as we were re-reviewing this, that there was a slight adjustment of the boundaries, and since we were addressing the lot coverage issue with a PAD amendment, we elected to address the parcel boundary issue at the same time. If you can note, this is the, from the land-use plan in the zoning document, and then this is how the parcels laid out and are being platted. And you, you can see the red line shows the new parcel boundaries as configured in this arrangement here. And so, basically, you've got a little section of Parcel 2, which is going from LDR 4 to LDR 2, and you've got a little bit of Parcel 1E that's going from LDR 4 to LDR 3, and, and lastly, and on Parcel 1E, you've got some that's going from LDR 3 to LDR 4. So really, a minor adjustment, and it's consistent with what you've seen on this property in the past. All the public notice requirements for this type of PAD amendment have been satisfied. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their meeting in May, recommended approval by a vote of six to zero, and the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as from staff, is to approve the ordinance as prepared and with the stipulations that's, are contained in the ordinance.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak?
Mayor, I would note that the applicant is here tonight, Mr. Scott Moore from BET Investments, and he is represented by Jeff Blyley, his attorney, if there's any questions for the applicant.
All right, so we'll, we'll ask for the motion, and they'll come after that, okay? Thank you very much, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk, please, read Ordinance 17-1352 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 17-1352, conditionally amending the final PAD zoning on 262 acres generally located south of Lower Buckeye Road, west of Cotton Lane, north of Broadway Road, and east of Citrus Road, and 66 acres generally located on the east side of Cotton Lane, between Lower Buckeye Road and Elwood Street, the El Cidro final planned area development to increase the maximum lot coverage as standard for the LDR 1, LDR 2, and LDR 3, low-density residential land-use categories, and to adjust the boundaries of Parcels 1D, 1E, and 2, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for corrections, severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you, could I have a motion a second?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Campbell, a second by Vice Mayor Loretano. Would you like to bring the applicant up now, if you'd like to talk, or just, because there's a question? Here he comes, okay.
Mayor members of council, Jeff Blyley, 701 North 44th Street. I don't really have anything to add, the staff already went over it, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, great. Well, just attention, you may have some questions here, all right? Any questions on this? Council? No? Great, okay, then let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. The next item on business, 7.5, is to consider approving agreements for the sale of the city property to RPPV 6 LLC to AL Arizona DC LLC. Michelle Laurie, and you're going to be up at like the next three, aren't you?
I am.
So don't go anywhere, stay right there at the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm glad to be with you here this evening, as are a few special guests here with us. Sean Walters, Chief Operating Officer with Sunbelt Holdings, as well as Bob Bambauer and Troy Mortensen with Sunbelt, and also Pat Feeney, who is a representative for Aldi Incorporated, our representative from the company, the director of real estate group, is actually in an airport right now, trying to fly out here to, from Dallas, there's a storm going on, so I'm sorry, he's not able to be here with us, but Pat is willing to answer any questions that might, might be warranted. So, we're very happy to discuss the opportunity for the sale of the 40 acres owned by the City of Goodyear at the southwest corner of Indian School Road and Cotton Lane and related infrastructure improvements. There's several lengthy documents that you have with you, but this evening, but with this action, we can make them relatively simple for all of us with a few numbers and charts, and I've been asked, if I could have Elmo? But I've been asked if I could orient you kind of to the area quickly. Oh, thank you for that, however you did that, thank you. You can see there, we've got the new, we've got here, Sub-Zero, Dix, REI, the 303 right here, Indian School Road, this is where the new UPS facility is. The spec building's not there yet, it's an older aerial. This is Cotton Lane, right here, and this is the property we're talking about, right here, this 40 acres, and it's right there. And I'm going to switch now to a different exhibit, just to show you, wanted to orient you a little bit there. Okay. So let's take the first agreement here between AL Arizona DC LLC, a related entity of Aldi Incorporated, an international grocer headquartered in Illinois. The agreement calls for the sale of 27.47 acres of the property to be sold to the company for a total of $3,577,575, or about 130,000, 130,212 per acre. This is at a price above the fair market value as determined by the city's real estate appraisal of May 2016, and that is right, that blue section right here, up to the red, that's what we're talking about right here. And on this property, along with several acres, it will purchase separately from Sunbelt Holdings, or RPPV 6 LLC. Aldi Incorporated intends to construct a 550,000-square-foot distribution center with a regional office component. The agreement calls for closing on the property in December of 2017, and that right there in the yellow, you can see it's labeled the Aldi site, it's kind of hard to tell, it's a little bit yellow all around, but it's that right there. And Brian McGee, who was supposed to be here with us, wanted me to share this with you as a rendering of what that might look like.
Oh, nice.
Right there, that regional office there on the corner. And then, let me switch back, so we can get oriented again. The second related agreement is for the sale of 10.592 acres of the property to be sold to Sunbelt Holdings, or RPPV 6 LLC, for $1,121,172, or 105,850 per acre. Proceeds from the real estate total sale of this 40, about approximately 40 acres, will total $4,484,091. This is almost 1 million more than what the city purchased the 40 acres for in 2004. So that's the first element of the agreement. The second element of the agreement is the infrastructure that is related to the action this evening. More than $5.6 million of infrastructure in the area will be built per this table. And you've seen this in the agreements that were posted and sent to you and posted to the public. And this, you'll see that the agreement, the city would be contributing up to about 2 point, little over 2.8 million, at which cost the city will be capped for the listed public infrastructure, including Indian School and Cotton Lane half-street improvements. All of these improvements, per the agreements, will be coordinated by RPPV 6 LLC, including construction of a stormwater retention basin on four acres of city-owned property just north of the property shown here on this map. This will help alleviate drainage problems in the area that currently require temporary closure of Indian School Road after heavy rainstorms. The city does maintain ownership of that property and will pay for that improvement, but Sunbelt will be coordinating the construction improvements. If these improvements listed under the city's responsibility come back at a lesser cost than the 2.8 million that we're capped at, the city will receive a reimbursement. These infrastructure costs to the city at just above the 2.8 million will be funded out of the sale of the real estate, so that 4.4 million that I gave before, that's going to be funded out of that, so it will net at least 1.6 million, and to be exact, $1,673,949, which will be placed into the city's general fund. The city will also have a new employer in Aldi Incorporated. The third agreement tied to this action tonight is the off-site escrow agreement to fund these improvements. The off-site escrow agreement relates to all three parties, City of Goodyear, RV, RP, PV 6 LLC, or Sunbelt Holdings, and Aldi Incorporated. These three agreements are all related in an effort to fulfill one of the city's goals established in its Economic Development Action Plan, adopted by council in 2014 to establish the Loop 303 area as a top manufacturing and logistics employment corridor. If this action is agreed upon this evening and Aldi closes on the property in December of 2017, as in the agreements, infrastructure improvements will begin immediately after that closing and are estimated to be completed by the end of 2018. All these current thoughts on construction time is to be operational by 2020, but may be moved up based on market conditions. This concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and as I said before, I believe Sean Walters is here on behalf of Sunbelt, and Pat Feeney on behalf of Aldi, for any questions from the council. for any questions from the council.
So we'll bring them up after, okay?
If they have, if you have any questions.
Yes.
However you want to handle it.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Would the city clerk please read Resolution 17-18? 1813 by Tataloni, please.
Adopt Resolution 17-1813, approving an agreement for sale and purchase of real estate with RPPV 6 LLC in the form of an escrow agreement, deposit money in an off-site escrow agreement attached thereto, approving an agreement for sale and purchase of real estate with AL Arizona DC LLC in the form of an off-site escrow agreement attached thereto, authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver the two purchase agreements, authorizing the city attorney to modify documents to be executed pursuant to the purchase agreements as required in the purchase agreements, and to make other non-substantive changes, authorizing budget transfers associated with the purchase agreements, authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of the resolution and the purchase agreements, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Heard a motion from Councilman Stip, and a second from, I didn't know it, oh, Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Would you like the applicant to come up, or you want to ask questions first? All right. Councilman Pizzillo.
First of all, welcome to the city. But second of all, for those of you that are watching outside, all this information sounds like a lot. This is not new to us. So this has been presented before. So as a result, this has been digested. And from my perspective, I don't have any further questions.
Next, Councilman Osborne.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for the presentation. And just as follow-up, could you give us like kind of little breakdown of bullet points of these agreements and the next items, too, just so we can have it within, in case citizens ask, because this one's a pretty complicated one. And I do agree with Councilmember Pizzillo. We've discussed this at length. But I did want to welcome Aldi, and I wanted to say that, you know, this is a special piece of property to the City of Goodyear, because years ago, when we purchased this, it was to, quite frankly, do our part in saving Luke. And it was something that the city and the council at that time really felt needed to occur, and we were trying to protect the flight zones in the past and everything. So I'm really proud of what the city did a long time ago in purchasing this property, and excited that things have, you know, come full circle, that we're now able to sell this property to, you know, a great corporation that wants to have their regional headquarters and their distribution within our city. So that's exciting, and I welcome you. And sorry, your other partner could not be here tonight, but I'm sure there will be plenty of times that we'll be speaking in the future. And if you want to move up that building date, you know, to 2019, we're all behind it. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell. Michelle, I just want to, I've taken notes, so that I want to be sure. We're selling it for 4.4 million.
Yes, and that's the whole 40 acres. That includes the 10-plus that Sunbelt is purchasing as well.
So in your, the picture that we don't have, or that I don't have?
I can hand it to you if you'd like.
That's okay. I'm trying to do it from memory. So the yellow?
Uh huh. I'll send it to you.
Yeah. Is the red part included, the red color?
I'll show that to you.
Okay, that's all right. I did go out to the site this weekend. I think it was this weekend, or Saturday I did. But I couldn't figure out where I was. I couldn't figure out how much of that site was, okay.
So this right here, if you see that rectangle, that's like a blue rectangle?
Oh, yeah, sure.
That is the city's 40 acres of property. Then you see that dividing line where you see the red down below, right there?
Uh huh.
That is the 10 acres plus acres that Sunbelt is purchasing from Goodyear.
Okay.
And then the, the blue building was just us saying that's where Aldi's building, we think, will be. But the whole yellow is the Aldi site.
Okay.
Oops, I'm sorry. Right here, right above the red. See that?
So are we getting 4.4 million for the yellow and the red and the blue?
So we're getting the 4.4 for just that, what's in that blue rectangle right there. So yeah, all of that right there. Sorry, I see how it's kind of confusing.
It is very confusing. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Everything in that, that kind of oblong rectangle, that is going to be the 40 acres. So the red piece is the piece that Sunbelt is purchasing, the 10 acres, and then the yellow piece within that rectangle is going to be what Aldi is purchasing.
So how much is the yellow, and how much is the red?
So the yellow is going to be about 27.4, and the yellow, or I'm sorry, the red is about 10, a little over 10. And then there's going to be, some of that is, it's approximate, some of that is going to be right away and things like that. So, yeah.
All right. And then we're going to take 2.8 from the sale price of 4.4 to put in the extra improvement. So we're really only clearing 1.6 plus the major improvements on the road.
That's right. That is correct, Councilmember Campbell.
And then are we done? Is that, is that the whole property?
So that is done. We are, that is the whole property. We have that four-acre retention basin that really nobody wants to purchase, because it's a kind of a...
That's the one that keeps the water out of Sub-Zero?
Right.
Okay.
And I can show that, too, right here, actually.
It's to the?
To the north.
The north of the yellow.
Exactly.
Got it. Okay.
So it's actually that, see that?
Yeah, I see it.
Lots of colors. Those are peach squares right there. That's where it is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Stip.
Michelle, thanks for, for all your work on this and all of the information. I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Pizzillo and Osborne that we've spent a great deal of time talking about this project. But I think we would be remiss if we did not thank the gentlemen from Sunbelt.
Yeah.
We have, we have developed a great relationship over the years, and have developed a great amount of property in the PB 303 that has been a benefit both to the city and to Sunbelt Holdings. So, gentlemen, thank you once again for your efforts in bringing this forward and bringing another project to our community. Aldi, welcome. We look forward to, to your Regional Operations Center here, and, and just another great city partner.
Any other? Well, I just want to say welcome as a mayor. We're thrilled. You know that, and I appreciate you working through all the items that had to be worked through to make this happen. This wasn't an easy one, I know. Michelle, I'm very proud of you. That was a great presentation and a great accomplishment, you and your team. So I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you. It was a team effort. I couldn't think of the city clerk and the city attorney's office, as well as the city manager, quite enough. So thank you.
Well, that's why we're so good here at Goodyear. We're working it as a team and making things work. So, all right. So we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. We're down to 7.6. A business to consider job creation agreement for the AL Arizona DC LLC Aldi. So Michelle, again, Laurie, economic director, is going to be doing the presentation. Michelle?
Thank you. And I think I have a PowerPoint up there. Oh, great. Thanks, Laney. This, again, is related to that agreement. This is Aldi and the job creation agreement that we came up with for them. There are, just to give you a little bit of information about them, again, international grocer with over 10,000 stores in 18 countries and 1,600 stores across the US. US headquarters in Illinois. Just to give you a little timeline, I know it's been referred to in the last action, but this has been a long process. In March of 2016, Aldi met with city staff as they considered several area sites in Goodyear and Metro Phoenix for the location. Aldi finalist locations included Goodyear and Buckeye. Late summer and early fall of 16, Aldi began negotiations with Goodyear and Sunbelt for the property we just talked about, and a portion of this land owned by the city and a larger portion by Sunbelt Holdings. There's that diagram again that you're familiar with. It's going to create 132 net new full-time positions, provide a net new full-time positions with an average salary of at least $40,000, and at least 65% of a full-time employee's healthcare insurance premium. It will, the company will invest at least $60 million in purchase of the building or of the land, building, construction, capital, equipment, et cetera. So our part of the agreement would be to waive or to reimburse up to a maximum of $285,000 in expedited plan review fees and permit fees, and then also support for activation of the Foreign Trade Zone site. They're determining whether they're going to qualify for that at this time, but our commitment to them was just city support of that, of that action. So on the economic impact of the project, I'm going to go with the direct revenue to the city first. It's estimated to be 1.9, just over 1.9 under the first, 1.9 million over the first seven years. And then the ESI Corporation, that's our third-party economic analysis firm that does these job creation agreements to make sure the city is receiving more than they're giving out, estimates that Aldi will total more than $131 million in total economic output over the first seven years. And I just wanted to address what that means. That's the total economic output. So that is the direct, the indirect, and the induced. So it includes the wages and the jobs that are coming from the actual company. It also is anything from the supply chain of that company. And then the induced is anything that those wage earners of that supply chain contribute to. So that's why that sounds like such a huge number. I know that. Wanted to explain that to you all. And then further positive impact for Goodyear on the regional office piece. We're very excited about that, to attractively develop the corner on Loop 303 and the freeway. And the location at the site is the catalyst for the remediation. We know we've talked about some of the challenges with some of the property that we've had, and it's going to really improve that area. So I wanted to point that out to you as well. Now, ready for questions and discussion?
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Well, the city clerk, please read Resolution 17-1808 by Tataloni, please.
Adopt Resolution 17-1808, approving, authorizing, and directing the city manager to execute a job creation agreement for AL Arizona DC LLC Aldi, authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of resolution and agreement, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Vice Mayor Loretano. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor.
I just want to make a point. This is another one we've talked about in detail. And I think it's really important for the public to realize that one thing, that when restaurants and entertainment look to come in, they're looking at our daytime employment numbers. And what you're bringing to us tonight is really going to help those daytime. So welcome to Goodyear, and I'm really glad to see those, those jobs coming to Goodyear. Thank you.
Others?
No.
Mayor? Councilman Pizzillo.
Again, welcome. And for the public, this has been thoroughly vetted, this particular agreement, and the additional money that's coming to the city as a result of it. It's a great win-win for all, all parties. So again, you know, welcome to the city.
Absolutely welcome from the mayor and the council. Looking forward to it. Michelle, good, good presentation. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. We're down to 7.7 to consider a job creation agreement for United Parcel Service and BT-OH LLC. Michelle's back with us again. You've got the floor, Michelle.
I get sick of seeing me up here. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, never. Thank you so much. Well, I'm very excited, again, to be before you today. And I know Councilmember Homan brought up in her speech today about UPS. We're very excited about that announcement. Just wanted to introduce Chanel Garner, who is here with us today. And she's the representative that we worked with here. And she, we worked with her. She is actually from the area.
Stand up so we can see her. Yes, welcome.
So Chanel just, just got promoted recently. So she helped us with this location, but she's going to be over about 27 states now. So I didn't want to steal her thunder with her board here, but it just to show, thank you, Robert, just to show, opening in, late in 2019, I also have an overhead projector, projection of it as well that I'll show in a little bit. But I wanted to introduce Chanel, and thanks for being here this evening. And if you have any questions, she'll be ready to answer questions. Great. So UPS, world's largest package delivery company in Atlanta, Georgia, leader in sustainable transportation with a commitment to incorporate natural gas and electrical vehicles in their fleet investment. In November of 2016, UPS first toured the first industrial spec building at PB 303. The locations were Goodyear and a location in West Phoenix. We worked very well with the Arizona Commerce Authority and the Greater Phoenix Economic Council for this announcement, so we want to thank them. In April of 2017, UPS made its decision to locate in Goodyear. And the announcement was made publicly last week on June 1st. In late April of 2017, UPS leased the first industrial building, that's more than 618,000 square feet, at the northeast corner of Loop 303 and Indian School Road. And UPS plans to acquire adjacent properties to provide for expansion. So UPS site is expected to incorporate approximately 136 acres that build out there. And there's the location. So that's the spec building there with the logo over it, and then all that area is, is what is depicted on Chanel's board here. Going to create 500 full-time positions, provide existing full-time positions with an average wage of at least $30 per hour, and a new full-time at at least $1,875 per hour. And some of the jobs are going to be coming from Phoenix, so that's why the existing, they usually talk about existing and the, and the new. They're going to create 1,000 part-time jobs coming from $10 per hour. UPS pays at least 65% of employees, the full and part-time, both the healthcare insurance premium, and invest at least $180 million in capital equipment, tenant improvements, building expansions, and purchase of property. So we will agree with this action to waive or reimburse up to a maximum of $1 million in expedited plan review fees and permit fees for up to five years, and also agree to support the activation of a foreign trade zone site. And UPS also is in the stages of looking to qualify for the foreign trade zone. I'm not quite sure that'll work, but we've agreed to support their application there with a city support letter. And I just wanted to give a little bit of explanation about that $1 million. It sounds like a big number. It's, actually, the equipment for UPS is so valuable, and our plan review and permitting fees are based on valuation. So the charges we would charge them would be fairly expensive based on the kind of machinery, but not really take more time to review and permit. So that's, the number sounds really large, but it's, it's pretty much the machinery and the valuation there that accounts for that. So the direct revenue to the city is estimated to be 1.2 million over the next five years, increased property and sales tax revenues generated by UPS, as well as the, as I said before, the indirect, the direct, and the induced economic output. And that would be about $1 billion in total economic output over the next five years. That's a very large number. And now questions and discussions, and I'm sure Chanel would answer any questions.
All right. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Could I, well, the city clerk, please, excuse me, read Resolution 17-1809 by Tataloni?
Adopt Resolution Number 17-1809, approving, authorizing, and directing the city manager to execute a job creation agreement for United Parcel Service Incorporated and BT-OH LLC, authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of resolution and agreement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second, please?
So moved.
Second. Heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
This is another one of those that we've spent countless executive sessions on and whatnot. So again, the public perception of this may be, oh, you're just giving away a million, and you haven't had any discussion. But it is, it's just another showcase piece of our, of our commitment to the economic development of the community. And I appreciate, for us, this has always been a project code name up until last week. So to UPS, we say thank you. It's a pleasure to have you as part of the, as part of the city. And, you know, we know the great things that, that UPS brings. And, and again, it becomes just another, another reason for people to move into our community. So we, you know, thank you, Michelle and the team, for everything that you did.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank PB 303, too, and First Industrial, Amerit Partners as well, that really worked hard on this deal. So while you said that, that reminded me of that. I wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. Councilman Pizzillo?
First, a comment and then a question on traffic. Actually, I know you were going to address that. But first, when it comes to UPS, I know individuals have worked for you, and they speak very highly of your company, how well they're treated, and how well they like working for you. So I'm looking forward to you coming to the city. Second question, we had talked about earlier, about traffic. And I don't know if you were going to address that, or...
Sure, I will. And I will go ahead and, let's see, I'll go ahead and go back to the, yeah, I'm in the present, I'm sorry. Sorry, Laney, the presentation's fine. So the traffic concern, there will be, there's a direct route to the 303. So the, we don't have the exact site plan yet, and that, I don't think we have that out, that... So we don't have the exact site plan yet, and I don't think we have that out, that kind of information. But wanted to let everyone know that they are not to take, you know, Indian School Road except for direct deliveries to the east, only to the west to get to that direct truck route on the 303. So only will direct deliveries take place going that way.
Any other questions? Councilman Osborne?
I just wanted to say welcome. We're thrilled about this announcement. And, you know, it's funny, these last couple of items that we've had have been true, true wins for our city. And the fact that the 303 has opened, really opened up a new world for the city of Goodyear. But it also has really, I think, is beneficial. In fact, I'm sure it's beneficial to these corporations or they want it picked here. And we're becoming, you know, the transportation hub and logistics hub that these corporations need, and that's exciting. You know, we have a lot of citizens that have asked, you know, last probably year and a half, why are we getting so many distribution centers? And you know, the thing was, I've explained to people, it's like, guys, industries cluster together, but the fact that we have this 303 has opened up, you know, this wonderful world of transportation to these companies and to fulfill their needs. So we're excited, we're thrilled about the jobs coming here, and the fact that we can partner together as a city and these corporations is something that we should, we're real excited about. And I'm thrilled. Thank you, Michelle. And everybody's hard work on all this. I know you guys have put a lot of time into it, and thanks a lot.
Councilman Holman?
Well, I just wanted to say that this is a great way to have your last meeting.
Yes, it is.
To have something so exciting. And I fully expect to have a special invitation for the ribbon cutting in 19, so that I can share with you the continued joy and the profitability of what you'll experience because of this decision. So I do welcome you. As you can see, I've been very excited about this throughout the evening, but I thank you.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Michelle, I have a question. I heard you say that they were not to use Indian School unless they were going east to deliver, but they would go west to 303.
Yes, right here.
So they will basically all be using Indian School, any way you look at it?
Yes, going west.
Okay. We have a light at Saraville. We know that now. With the church going in, there'll be an entrance somewhere between Saraville and the 303 light. Am I correct?
For the church or for the...
The refinery church that we just passed.
Oh, I'm not sure.
It's the triangle.
Let Christopher address that.
Or am I, am I one, am I too high, too low? Or am I in the same place?
Mayor, council, Councilmember Campbell, that's correct. The drive, that private drive coming off of where the refinery church property is is, would be on...
It's going to be between Saraville and the 303 light.
Yeah, yeah. Now, maybe go back to the presentation.
Forget that one.
That's all right. Thank you, though. So the private driveway would be coming out and about in this location.
Okay, we may need another discussion about a light before everything is done. And Councilmember Stiff brought it up, but I didn't put it together that the UPS facility would be using that as well. And I know they don't work weekends unless they do special deliveries on Saturday, so Sunday it might not be an issue as far, but if you're bringing in 600 people while they're trying to get out, we might have a little congestion right there.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that. And I think part of it will play out in terms of how they lay their site out and access and so forth.
Sure.
So I know when we are doing development review and so forth and coordinating with our friends in engineering, access points and lineup from traffic safety and flow of traffic is always a critical component of what we're evaluating.
All right.
And so we would be very cognizant of making sure those, that intersection aligns up.
Okay, because you're going to have two, two big, huge projects coming in, I don't know about the same time, but whatever, but we don't want to have to come back and revisit to put in a light if we need to do that now.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Vice Mayor?
I just want to add in, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everyone from PB 303, and thank you, UPS, for selecting Goodyear. I, you're going to be a great partner, and we're really excited to see all these jobs come to Goodyear. It's been a great day, Michelle. Thank you.
Well, I thought it was wonderful listening to you this weekend when I'm looking at the, you know, the Twitter and the internet, it was all over everything. I was just so surprised. And so it was a big discussion in the neighborhoods, and wherever you went, people wanted to know, know about it. So Chanelle, thank you for your presence tonight. We really appreciate it. Oh, he has one more thing. Go ahead.
Mayor, council, as Michelle alluded to, we've been working with UPS for quite a while on this. And I just wanted to thank Chanelle and her design team for the high-quality plans they've been working very collaboratively with our review staff. The process has been very seamless, and we appreciate the effort and her team's effort in working in a very collaborative manner to the best resolution possible on these. And that's, I think, one of the reasons that we're successful. So I just wanted to publicly thank her.
Thank you for those positive words. It's so true. They are, you can see, we couldn't have brought something together like this, and in the timeframe and all the things that's happened, if there wasn't a partnership and if it wasn't a class, a class company that was coming to Goodyear. So we appreciate, Michelle, again, good work before I put this to vote. Are you answering any other questions?
No, I just wanted, if I could have Elmo just to show, this is what Chanelle is showing the council with her board there. So I just wanted to show you, that's the buildout at 2000, late 2019. So I just wanted to show the public that and everyone.
Yeah. I think we're all happy, right? Are you ready for this roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, we're on the next item, 7.8 is to consider Goodyear Retail Development Impact Fee Program. Michelle, you're up again.
The last, you'll see, thank you, this evening. The Retail and Entertainment Development Impact Fee Incentive Program. I'm delighted to bring this to your discussion this evening. In the background, another much discussed item. In October of 2016, we had a council retreat discussion where this was brought up. March 2017, we had a work session on retail outreach and potential incentives, comparing different incentives across the valley. And April 2017, we had an executive session with consultation to discuss with the city attorney. And today, we have a recommendation for adoption of the program. So just a little bit about development impact fees. Development impact fees are one-time charges instituted by cities for public facilities based on the proportionate share of costs incurred for infrastructure, facilities, and services needed to accommodate new development. In Goodyear, development impact fees are assessed differently in three distinct zones. That's the north, the central, and the south. And I'll give a description, a table of what that kind of looks like in a second. Any reductions in development impact fees must be made whole by the municipality, thus resulting in an impact to the general fund. So here's what it looks like. This is an example from the central zone. You have the utility development fees on the top there, depending on the water and wastewater needs. And then you have the nonutility development fees. And this is, again, the example is the central zone, and that's south of I-10 to the Gila River. And those nonutility development fees are the ones that we're going to be discussing here this evening. And that is for commercial, it's parks and recs, streets, police, fire, and then you'll see the total there. It's per thousand square feet of floor area is how it's described. And I've got a couple of examples here so you can see what it would look like. So an example here, a recommendation example, the square footage of 500, or, sorry, a 5,000, 500 square foot restaurant. The estimated development impact fees for the nonutility expense to city is about $14,559. $10,000, it's about a little over $26,000 for a large restaurant or retailer, and that's about 10,000 square feet. And then you've got something like an 85,000 square foot grocery store or some entity like that, that would be much higher at 224,000, almost 225. So just to give you kind of a description of what that looks like, what someone would be saving, they're developing in that, those square footage types. So the recommendation of the program, as we've discussed over the past few months, the recommendation from staff is a development impact fee reduction of the nonutility fees, the limit of the 5,500 square feet or greater for retail, and the $2 million cap, $2 million cap over two years. So that's fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19. It's $2 million over the both of the two years. So not $2 million separate, maybe $2 million over. It's, year one would be the 100% reduction, year two would be the 75% reduction. And just a recommendation, pros and cons, we've kind of gone through these before, but just wanted to kind of put those to you as well. You know, the pros is that it's an aggressive retail incentive program to market. It really shows the commitment from the city to bring retail to the citizens, and we know that's the most desired business that we have, is restaurants, retail, and entertainment. It could accelerate idle projects, so projects that are, we want to get see moving. This could make them move more quickly. It creates that urgency with a limited timeframe, and it could provide an increase in sales tax base. And just some things to think about, there is that impact to the general fund for the development impact fee reduction, so that $2 million over that two years, that is in the tentative budget. And so that is, that is where that is at this time. Could incentivize activity ordering in the pipeline. So conversely, with the pros, it's a pro and a con. So it could, things that, it doesn't necessarily mean they're brand-new things that are coming, might be things that we already know about, but might make them come faster. It cannot guarantee most desired retailers, so this program's not going to guarantee that we get a Trader Joe's or something like that. I use that example because that's the number-one requested business here in Goodyear. And in, I think, most other communities, I think our retail advisors would tell us, it's not going to guarantee that. You know, it, the last point there, I'll say, is it doesn't replace the need to enhance growth residential and employment base as the number-one driver in retail. So wanted to make sure that we reminded everyone that the most important drivers of retail are what we've talked about, the vice mayor mentioned earlier, and several others of the council, that daytime traffic and the quality of that daytime traffic. So these jobs are really helping to be there in that daytime population. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, too. And we cannot discriminate based on the type of retailer. So what we've been able to do to kind of put parameters around the program is to limit it to 5,500 square feet or greater. And that's, that's pretty much the, you know, the guidelines that we can go by, so not discriminating against certain types. And now, just questions and discussion.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Everybody in the audience like to speak? Okay, will the city clerk please read Resolution 17-1810 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 17-1810 approving a retail development impact fee incentive program, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the retail and entertainment incentives program to encourage retail and entertainment development in the city of Goodyear, authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of resolution and program and providing for an effective date.
Could I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. No, Councilman Stiff?
Go ahead, Joy. Wait, where do you want to go?
I don't know. I said Stiff, but I'm looking for them, so the next one...
Yeah, I know, you said Stiff, but you were looking away, so I didn't know where you wanted to go.
I got to look all over, so I'm working it, I'm working it. Go ahead, you're on.
Michelle, I think the answer may be obvious, but I still want to ask it. Is there a reason that, since we are reimbursing this with, with general fund monies, is there a reason that we did not include the utilities?
Yes, Councilmember Stiff, Mayor, the reason for that is they're different across the different boundaries. So we didn't want to give an incentive, an extra incentive, somewhere north, somewhere south, central, and make it different. And plus, we don't have, they're different, so we didn't want to kind of scale that differently.
Aren't all of our fees different depending on the zone that you're in?
They are. That's a very good point, Councilmember Stiff. I think that we didn't include the water and wastewater because it varied so much, and it was also something that was a, I think, a principle that we had talked on early, early on about, you know, having to create infrastructure and so not wanting to delineate those.
The reason that I ask the question is, I, you know, I look at the amount of money, so unless you're building greater than 10,000 square feet, from, I'm going to invest a couple of million dollars, it's not a lot of money. So you're really not juicing me to want to come a little faster. You take into consideration the water and wastewater, now there's a little, there's a little juice for the squeeze. So I'm kind of driving in that direction. So, and I know we've not really had any discussion about this, other than the concept of doing it, an incentive, so that's right, that's what I said.
Did you address that, city manager?
Yeah, yes, Mayor and Councilmember Stiff, it's a great point. And this is one we beat up and looked at from a variety of ways. And one of the things we tried to not cause was a disincentive in different regions. For example, we do not provide public water and sewer infrastructure north of Interstate 10. South of Interstate 10 to Gila River, we do, and that is at a certain amount. And then you go further back into Estrella, that's a different zone. Water and sewer development impact fees there are different than central Goodyear. So the level playing field for all parts of the city, so one area wouldn't get a bigger benefit, the other was to do it this way, but that was the thought behind it.
Were, are there other, are there other options besides just the impact fee?
Can I address that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Stiff, I have to make sure that's okay with, no. But yes, absolutely, there are. And something that we had discussed early on not to be considered in this program because we wanted to make sure to keep this clean was the plan review and permit fees that we discussed, like we discussed this evening with UPS and with Aldi. We can certainly do that in those cases that we want to do, that, that type of activity. And we will be communicating that as well, but this program thought to keep this kind of clean and separate, that we would not include that in this program. So, but it will be communicated to those developers and those retail users that that is a possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Pizzillo, go ahead.
Listen, I appreciate that the tough line in all of this is to try to, to craft something that meets certain mustard, that, and that's one of the reasons why we went back and forth, you know, withstand legal challenges. And when it comes to, and I appreciate Councilmember Stiff's on the water and sewer, but from my perspective, I think part of the problem would be is, we've got multiple water companies work in the city. So if we gave that, then you're talking about a fairness issue. When you're applying it supposedly equally across the board, people north of 10 would have no water or sewer credits because they're in a different water system. So I think that's part of the reason why, to me at least, it makes sense on the water sewer not being in there. As far as the building permit fees and plumber's own scene, that's another piece that we can throw in there as well. But again, from a legal standpoint, we had gone back and forth and wanted to get something crafted from a fairness standpoint that'll hold up as much mustard. That doesn't mean, somebody might come in and say they want to challenge it, but we wanted to try to get as much as we can, because if you look at our projected revenues heading out into the future, and especially with the fire stations and some of these other services that we're going to need, even though our revenues are somewhat strong, you know, at least from my perspective, we've got to figure out a way to grow that to try to keep pace with these service demands that are coming as we bring all these new neighborhoods on. Otherwise, we're going to see a reverse of our revenue expense, you know, lines, and which is going to be more difficult to keep up with these paces. So I don't know if this will work. I know I remember when I mentioned trying to do something to jumpstart this. I'm hoping it will, but I think it's nothing ventured, nothing gained. to jumpstart this, I'm hoping it will, but I think it's nothing ventured, nothing gained. We've got to try something to try to get, you know, our revenue growth up a little bit higher as far as the sales tax, because that's what pays, that's what really pays the bills.
Vice Mayor?
And again, this is something that we've spent several work sessions and several hours debating and going over, so the people just turning it in tonight are like, so it's not like this big giveaway, we've actually discussed this. One thing, when we talk about the restaurants, that was a big issue on the size, could you tell the public about, for Oregano's, for example, what size is that restaurant?
Oh, sure, and Oregano's, I believe it's 5,500.
Yeah, so just people can kind of get a size idea of where this fits in.
Yes, thank you.
And I think, as Councilman Pizzillo said, you know, we need to do something to try to get more of that retail, I think we took the first step with, with the, the last list we just went through of bringing all these jobs here, I think that's going to be a great component, and hopefully with this will help jumpstart some of those other businesses as well, and, you know, we can look at this program and keep continuing it or adding it as needed, and see where it goes from here, so I think it's a great start, so thank you guys for coming, bringing that forward.
To the left, any comments?
Oh, I do that.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. You know, this is, this is a really special type of aggressive program that we're looking at, and, and I see it as, you know, a way to try to get some of those unique restaurants and retailers that, you know, our public keeps asking for. But I also see it, and this is me, the small business person that's saying this, I see this as a chance for a small business to finally take that leap to move forward. Councilmember Stip said that some of these numbers might not seem so large, however, my building alone, 5,000 square feet, permit fees and impact fees was $27,000 to our city. And so for me as a small business, that was a large amount, because that was actual cash out of hand. As we look at our strategy of how we move this forward, I ask that this aggressive program not be our best-kept secret, because I think that if we let our local banks, if we let our chambers, if we let our SBA companies out there that are the, they're like, there's a third party that has to be between a small business and the SBA, and those entities are the ones that can truly see the value that this will have as a down payment, as part of the down payment package for a lot of this, these loans and these capital investments. The other thing could be the Arizona Small Business Association, SCORE, that, there's a lot of entities that we really should be giving this information to, because that's where we may hit some of these unique retailers and unique restaurants that people ask for, and it may be the thing that they all of a sudden realize, we can do this, this is just another tool that has been handed to them to make it go forward. You know, I'm excited about it, I think that there's going to be some things we're not going to be thrilled about, but there's going to be things that, you know what, unless we try this, we're never going to know, and we could be pleasantly surprised, so, so I'm thrilled that this is coming forward.
Any other comments?
If I could just say, I'm glad you brought that up about the communication, and I've heard that from several members, that communication is really that key piece, because it is, I'm looking at Councilmember Campbell, it is a key part of this, because if you look at the numbers alone, and I understand what Councilmember Stip is saying, but if you look at the 100% reduction that we're so, being so aggressive to go out and be able to market, and so what we're going to do, and I wanted to make sure and address that in my comments, so I'm really glad you said that, because it reminded me of that, that what we're going to do is immediately, we're going to start immediately talking to, and we've already, actually, we've already started, Robert told me today, he's like, they already all know, the brokers, the, all of the folks that we deal with already know we're going to move in this direction, so they're excited about it. But we're also going to start talking to other folks immediately, but what we're going to do to communicate to the residents as well, and we're going to wait until the budget, the actual budget adoption to do that more major rollout, but we're going to do the conversations with those people who we think are prospects now, so I just wanted to make sure you know that.
Another question, Michelle, great work on your team, the entire team, I know worked on this, they've done a great job, and this was, this is quite a move for you to make to council. I don't know, a year ago or what, they would have accepted this, so I think we've all kind of grown knowing what we need to do, and we're doing it, so, great. So we're going to vote on this, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
We're going to the last item on the business, is considered canvassing the May 16, 2017 general election results. Marie Scott, city clerk, will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. The item before you is to canvass the 2016 general election that took place on May 16. Brandon Hampton and Sarah Gilligan had the next highest votes in the primary election, but didn't obtain the majority of the votes in order to earn a seat in the primary held in March. So Brandon and Sarah's name appeared on our general election ballot. Brandon Hampton received 5,717 votes, and Sarah Gilligan received 4,465 votes. Brandon had the majority of votes and has been elected to fill the third seat on the council. And we had another great voter turnout with 10,226 ballots returned. So thank you for your time, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So could I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Councilman Holman made the motion, and Councilman, oh, Councilman Campbell made the motion, just speak a little bit louder towards when you're doing it. Councilman Campbell made the motion, and Councilman Osborne, a second. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Just congratulations to Brandon, obviously, for winning the election, but Sarah also, I think you're sitting behind the pole. She is. Takes a lot of courage to get up and get in front of the community and run, and Brandon, you did it twice, so hats off to you, but it's a, it's kind of a big deal to put yourself out there, so thank you both for participating in the, in the process, and congratulations.
Any other comments? Councilman Campbell?
Well, Brandon, I just wanted you to know that I ran against a Joe, and I beat him in the general, and he beat me in the runoff, and I had to run again, so you're joining a very elite group of, we run again till we win, so welcome.
Any other comments? Marie, thanks to all, you work on the election, it's not an easy time for you, it's not just, it's not just the people campaigning, it's, the office is buzzing during that time, and I want to thank you for helping those that would come up for information that they needed and helped them with the paperwork, and you're both, both smiling about it, you did a great job and a great service, so I really appreciate that. So, let's have a vote on this, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, it's 8:18, and look where we are, so we're on information items, does council have any comments or combinations, reports, or anything you want to give? What's this for, yes, no?
Yeah, just, just one quick thing.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Go see Wonder Woman, great movie.
At Harkins.
At Harkins.
You know, what can I say?
I want to say, Mayor.
All right. Vice Mayor Lortano, you want to say something?
I just, I was gone for the last couple of weeks, and I just want to say, when you come home, I want to give our city staff and our city employees just kudos. When you travel and you see how well, you come home and you see how well-kept our city is, how beautiful it is, the roads, it's just, when you come home, you really have a new perspective on how well-run that the staff does everything from top to bottom. And I do apologize, I missed both the police and fire awards, so just give my best to your folks, thank you.
Yeah, then, Councilman Holman?
I just wanted to comment on a new business that just did their ribbon-cutting in Goodyear. They're bringing, I think, a new concept to, into our city, it's called Marketplace, is there another word?
Cooperative.
Marketplace Cooperative, I think. And it, they're very young, they're very excited, they brought in new, so I would encourage people to kind of look, see what they do, if you would, and kind of spread the word, because it's going to be an uphill climb for them, any new concept, there's a challenge, and I'd like to see us all work together to ensure success.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, Brian, you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I do have a couple of follow-up items, and then, and then an information update as well. So for follow-up, it was requested of staff to provide a background on how we came about the elections, the protocol, the schedule, and why we are in the spring, spring election season, so we'll, we'll get that back to council.
And can you be sure you put the background and things that have happened?
Right.
So that gives them the history of it all?
Yes, it would include that background, information. Then the other is, we are evaluating the over and under votes during the summer time, so that is under evaluation at this point. It was asked to do a summary of the economic development items tonight, just a brief summary of the bullet, so it's easier for, to disseminate that information, talk about it out in the public. So those were the follow-up items. I do have an announcement, we'll get this out in the weekly managers as well, but REI, they, the Goodyear Distribution Center won the NAOP, that's North American Industrial Office Properties Organization for the top industrial development, so recognize, we're merit partners, and I see that Sunbelt isn't here now, but merit partners, which works with them, and Sunbelt Holdings, they're named the recipients for this industrial project of the year, and it's the, the reason is, it's the only net-zero energy US green building LEED, and LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Platinum Certified Distribution Center in the world, in the world. Its roof features 2.2 megawatt solar system, that's enough to light up a couple of lightbulbs, and it's, and it's the first, what they call omni-channel, one-touch fulfillment system, so what that does, that enables one person to do the work of eight, and it is, it's very unusual to have something like that. Our center, our distribution center covers 40% of their sales, REI's sales, each and every year. Finally, this industrial project of the year will be presented, and this is national, by the way, on Friday, June 9, at NAOP's ICON Industrial Conference in Long Beach, California, so a very, very tremendous award that they've received, I just wanted to pass that along.
That's great. Council, do you have any inquiries to staff?
I do.
I do.
Yes, all right, let's start with Councilman Campbell.
All right, this is for staff, I would like to know, in all of council, I'm assuming, if you have scheduled our retreat, number one. Number two, I'd like an update on the water billing for the farm that we discussed.
Water billing for what?
The farm.
Oh, the farm.
Yes. And number three, I would like to know if we're any closer to get the status of the uncovering of some of the traffic signals that we talked about several months ago, and was going to take a couple of weeks till we could get an answer. And number four, I would like to just let you know that I am getting complaints of people going to Harkins unable to find places to park, and they're parking all over, and I'd like to know how many parking spaces have been provided for the theater, because it appears that every show is a sellout, which is wonderful, we're thrilled, but apparently we didn't plan enough parking places, and I know the city had nothing to do with it, but I would like to know so that when people are catching me at Safeway again and telling me they couldn't find a place to park and they were in the field, that I can tell them, you know, well, we had 900 parking spaces, and I'm sorry, they're all filled. But I don't even know what the capacity is of the theaters, all of them, if every, and it appears that every show is sold out, so we're at the max capacity that fire will let us have people in there, apparently, so.
Do we have the stats on that comment?
Yeah, I don't know, I'd like the stats, yeah.
Who has the stats? Who has the stats on that?
That'd be great, I'd like to know that, because...
And if I may on that point, so the, we can provide what the parking space requirements are for that, and also the capacity for the theater, we do have that information, so...
My comment was, if that's, people are saying that publicly, I want to be sure that...
Yeah, they're saying it publicly.
That's not their opinion, because they're going over there, I want to substantiate it, because that's a dangerous thing when you, when you say, oh, you know, and, and we are all guilty of that, and our citizens are guilty of that, and I just don't want that to happen on that.
Right, and they would not be exceeding occupancy requirements. I, if I may, going back, a couple of those items we are, have been following up on, will continue, that's the water billing for the farm, also the traffic signals uncovering. The retreat intentionally was to wait until council member, and in this case, Brandon coming on board, wanted to make sure that all schedules were looked at as we, as we develop the schedule for the retreat.
All right, and then, I'm done, but I have a future agenda item when you get to it.
Yeah, okay, is somebody on here, Councilman Osborne?
Okay. One of these items, actually, well, I don't know if they're agenda-driven, that they could be future agenda items, but they're also, starting with you, Mr. Dahlke. So, my dear friend, Ryan Lance, and I had a meeting the other day, and, you know, we have our 10-year anniversary next year, and he came to talk to me about the possibility of changing our mascot, and that there has been a lot, he's hearing it over and over all these years, of not knowing what Zizzi is. The general public doesn't know what Zizzi is, there's derogatory comments of what Zizzi is, and so it's been...
But you know what, they're commenting, they notice them.
I'm bringing you the question because it is, it is bothering our partner, and so...
But they have their own.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it to you guys, I said, I don't know if this is something I'm just bringing to Brian, or if this is something that's going to be a future agenda item, I'm not going to keep it as my secret of knowing that there's frustration there, so that is why I'm bringing it to you, and we can all do with it what you guys will, but I am bringing you the information, okay?
Thank you for that, the staff will follow up with Ryan, and it is Indians' 10th anniversary coming up next year for spring training at our complex.
We could challenge a boxing match between the two of them.
Because Zizzi only has four fingers, so it's tough to put a boxing glove on there.
So Mayor, could the city manager give us the history of Zizzi, because apparently y'all did this with none of us on council, could you tell us how it, how it came to fruition?
This is not on the agenda, but we can...
No, but I'm asking this inquiry of staff, please, because we're getting ready to buy a new uniform.
We are, it's appropriated in this year's budget to...
I know, and remember, that's what I thought when I asked about that, I saw that line item, I thought we were on the same page and we weren't.
Yeah.
Okay, the other, the other item, I'm sorry, sorry.
Follow up on the same subject.
Yes, go ahead.
Before we spend money on a new Zizzi?
She said.
Yeah, I didn't, want to make sure it didn't get lost.
Understood, because we have appropriated $12,000 for this, and, and Zizzi is, is a replica of the nice art piece out in front of the ballpark, that's how that came about, but we will follow up and, and let you know.
Nobody likes, nobody likes.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Oh, I wasn't done.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Osborne?
Okay, two other things, back in, I want to say, well, the fall last year, I'd spoken with Michelle about doing a tour for, well, myself for council, of our city, of kind of just all, we've had so much development, that there are so many companies here, and there's a lot of things that have changed, and you know, so many times we approve these years in advance that we forget what it is that are in some of these places. Now, I know that Brandon will be joining us, and I hope that coming this fall, that we can have a tour together just to, you know, go back over our city of where items are, so I'm going, I'm going to ask for that for a future item. And then lastly, as this evening, when we were looking at El Cidro, and we've had a lot of change in, this is kind of a putting on my planning and zoning geek hat, I suppose, but when I look at really changing to...
changing to smaller housing projects, which is fine, and, you know, footprints that the houses are staying on a piece of property. But when these are a lot of family homes, there's not much yard space. And so, this is just something that we, as, as development goes in the future, what we should be looking at, and this is my own opinion, but as a parent who had her children in Wildflower Ranch, and I was just, this funny thing, my, my daughter's best friend, who now lives in Wildflower Ranch, had her first child this weekend. And I went there to go see her. And every, every street in Wildflower Ranch has cul-de-sac, which I know, for, for public safety, they hate the fact, kind of, some of those cul-de-sacs. But as a parent, I loved them, because I knew our children were always safe playing in the cul-de-sac, because there wasn't so much streets. Now, these new developments are coming with the houses, taking up more space on the footprint of the land, and there's not much yard space. So, we're, the kids are going out to play in the street. And so, I'm asking, as we look at planning, put in more cul-de-sacs, because I think that's going to allow children a safer area to, to play. And I'll get off my soapbox now.
Next. Councilwoman Pizzillo?
I, I appreciate the information on the hands-free ordinances that a lot of the, you know, valleys, some of the valid cities have passed regarding cell phones. If you would, when we do have our retreat, that's something, so I don't forget, like to go ahead and put on as a topic to address.
I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Topic for myself to address the hands-free ordinances for the retreat.
And, and Council, Councilmember Pizzillo, what we'll do is, will, as ideas come up for the retreat, we will absolutely provide all those to council. And, and we'll look at what the interest of council is for all agenda items, and that'd be the approach. And we certainly look forward to all ideas for the retreat as it comes up.
Thank you.
So, just to let you know, there may be 20 ideas, and, and council may want to really focus on five for the retreat, but that does not preclude other times for talking about any item that council wants to.
I guess the other avenue is requested for a work session, but I'll play that by ear as we kind of go.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. The next be the regular meeting will be the council's inauguration on June 12th at 6:00 PM. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Mayor, I have a future council agenda inquiry, please.
I'm sorry, what?
A future council agenda inquiry, please. I'd like to see the White Tanks Conservancy, either as a work session or as an agenda item, because they came before us during the public time. And they talked about the Conservancy. They talked about all of the cities joining in with their foundation. And they implied they would like Goodyear to come on board as well. And since we've done this now for the military, for the Veterans' Success Program, I think we owe it to the White Tanks Conservancy to discuss what they have proposed to us.
They're proposing money.
I know.
So, it's not, not the same thing as Luke. So...
Well, we gave money.
You'll have to decide, and it's quite a bit of money. It's not a small amount. And I agree with you, it's fine to have a discussion on, but I just want you to know, it isn't, it isn't like Luke. We are not going to use staff to go do something in the park. We are going to pay money for that, and which is not wrong. But just so you're clear on that, yes.
And Mayor and Councilmember Campbell, so at this part of the agenda, while we don't vote on it, if there's a, at least three council members that, that are in favor of this coming back before council, we could get it prepared for council. Right now, it's one council member's brought it before your consideration.
And I think it's a good idea to bring before. I don't have anything else to bring you, bring you before.
Yeah, I'll, if Wally wants to listen to it, or wants to discuss it, I want to hear about it.
Here's our three.
And, and just for clarity, that's looking at for the contribution amount that there, the opportunity to contribute to it. It would be in a business item as compared to a work session item, is what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other? All right. Well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.